Yeah, sit over there.
We're going.
All right, so I will call meetings at order, meeting to order at 5:34. Clerk, can you call and roll, please?
Sure. Jim Schrader, James Kurtman. I'm present. Isaiah, Cindy Bytine.
Here.
Gary Demaschke.
Here.
Mary Michelle.
Here.
Thank you. I do have proof of posting. Will you please join me for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I will second that.
All right, questions, discussion. Hearing them, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
I'll say yes. Perfect. So, thank you to Rachel for coming back to us and rescheduling. I know it was a little challenging sometimes to get up on. We're still not even here. But we try our best sometimes. So, kind of as a comeback to kind of follow up with Jordan and I'll let you take the reins and we'll go with what you need.
Okay, very good. Well, part of the superintendent's search contract that the board entered into was that I would come back as a follow-up after the, after Jordan was hired and to help set goals and expectations. Well, we've kind of drifted through probably that period of time because he's been on the job for six months, seven months, something like that. So, what I thought, what might be fun and interesting and especially since you have two new, well, new to me board members, is that I have copies of the focus group responses. And just to refresh your memory, the focus groups, there was one with the teachers and one with the support staff, one with the administrative team, and the public in general, and the board. So, and we had agreed that rather than me writing a paragraph with my interpretation, that you're getting kind of a bullet point to comment, you know, that kind of came out. What I tried to do with the focus groups is that if there was a common theme, I tried to cluster those bullets so that they were kind of together. And you certainly don't have to read all of them because some of them are kind of like warmer uppers when you're doing this. But I think for tonight's purposes, number five and six are, and eight are probably the areas that we would want to take a look at. And, and I also, I've got some themes if we want to get to that. I don't want to lead you around too much, but, you know, if we need to, I can kind of help move things around. Then the second document is the community survey. So, what the district also did is they had a link on their website and members of the community and the staff as well, anybody who was, could go onto the website, click on the link, and take the survey. And this will be more of just kind of raw numbers rather than any sort of other comments and interpretations. There's really, it's our survey that we, we use with WASB and it does not have the open-ended because you kind of do that through the focus group process. So, you don't really need to do it again. So, you want to take just a few minutes and kind of refresh your memory, take a look at things? And then I thought what we could do is, this is what you were thinking of. Now you've had seven months. Are you still thinking along these lines or is it time to make a change? If it is, in, in the activities and goals and expectations, then Jordan needs to know that and so forth. So, that's kind of the outline for tonight. Go back to square one, reflect, and then what do you want to do?
Great. Sounds good.
Okay.
I don't know maybe if you're as you're reading, if you want to shout out one or you can certainly kind of go through that.
I did like eight point one. Eight point one at home because you ain't getting any here.
I remember. Jim, right? What's on, Jim?
I don't know, but I put it in there because we all got such a kick out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Should have gave us to me before the interview. Thanks a lot.
Sorry.
Oh, this is such a positive place.
Well, minus a few here and there, you know.
It's a joke.
I like the one, be careful of what you say because everyone is related to someone.
That is really true.
Except for you, you moved in.
Exactly.
Thanks for doing this because I just feel like this is a great time to kind of reflect on all this stuff as it kind of incorporates with our engagement plan and some of the stuff I'm like, oh.
Well, this stuff we had last.
I know, but I, you know.
This is hard to remember.
Yeah, I did too. I was trying to come back to it too.
I think when you have a chance to look at the bullets and then also the community survey, then really the, the themes are repeated in whole spots. It's not like you're going to find some surprise in one category or another.
So, Jordan, anything that stuck out at you going through, you know, especially like number five? Things that, you know, the community and teachers and stuff were looking for and that you feel is a little outlandish or maybe, I'm not sure.
And then just a, we tried to use this information in developing the interview questions and also in developing the essay questions that each candidate had to submit with their second part of their application. So, but it's probably the first time Jordan has seen all this.
If you have a higher decision?
I don't think I saw that one.
Which one?
Number eight.
In, in question eight?
Yeah. Acanize over your decisions.
I saw that one, yeah.
That's not very good advice.
Think, think hard before, maybe don't make snaps.
Maybe that's what it was.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was like, don't shoot from the hip. Yeah.
This community does not need a change agent. Like his kids will only go to school once. Make sure they don't.
We can certainly try.
Which number was? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that, yeah. Well, when you get an unsummarized version, you get a little bit more nitty gritty, you know. Some of the consultants do not give this to their boards. They, they put it in a paragraph and that's what you get.
I like it this way.
But I think it doesn't feel like your own.
Yeah. I think if it's summarized, then it kind of feels like they're fluffing over some of the stuff maybe too and you're like, you know.
You're picking and choosing.
Yeah.
What, and as I said, what I did is I tried to cluster them so that, you know, like communication things were all together and finance things were all together. But I could have missed them some too.
Excuse me one more. This is from the focus groups.
Yep.
Which would have included teachers, EAs?
Teachers, support staff, let's see, we had teachers, support staff, administrators, the public.
Oh, okay.
And what was my fifth one? I had five of them.
That kind of gives a breakdown of who actually ended up taking it.
Oh.
Oh, I should have looked at that.
And that was just the survey.
That's just the survey.
Okay.
But presumably those people probably participated.
It's just interesting.
I didn't.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring my, my workup for the focus groups because that was reams of papers.
Excuse me, I find it interesting looking at some of the comments. My head just kind of goes.
I know.
What? Where did I read that from?
Maybe I had two different opportunities for teachers. Because I think I came down on an in-service day or something.
I think it was.
Or two different times?
Yeah, two different times.
The support staff could be.
Yeah.
Because the support staff was separate and I only had a handful of people for that. But I'm pretty sure I had five. And we had snow, remember we got?
Yeah.
Yeah, for that. The, the public one.
It was bad weather.
Yeah.
I think we rescheduled.
It was several times ahead and we rescheduled, yeah. All right, you're quiet down there, Jordan.
Nervous. I'm here five. I like, being an emotionally stable person, you can set up good relationships, not someone with personality quirks.
Quirks, I doubt about that, yeah.
Like, sorry, your quirks.
Everybody's got their quirks.
There are some interesting things in this.
Yeah.
The one at the bottom of the page. Have a good family life, good friendships, and not multiple.
Multiple relationships. Very specific.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Ask before you react.
I think with that, with that, there was kind of this sense of the staff wanted to be involved. That was, I think, if I recall, that theme. Do you have any, you know, I, when I read through this, I came up with six themes that were kind of coming out. Do you want to hear them?
Sure.
Come up with your own.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, definitely there's issues around finances. So, there, I mean, and that was, that's, you know, be able to do a budget, understand a budget, present a budget. We've got issues with the state and there was quite a few comments, I didn't even add them all, on not going to referendum every other year. So, something we could do about this referendum. So, that's just kind of finances is a theme. And then another theme was just the whole teacher retention thing. And part of that was the staff is aging. But then you also, there were quite a few comments about you're in Dane County and it's real easy for your staff to go elsewhere to another city or Madison or whatever. So, kind of a combination of how do we attract them? How do we keep them? How do we have them participate? So, I just clustered that as teacher retention. And then there was a lot of stuff with community involvement, you know, and that's when the conversation came up with, there's two communities, they want to remain unique, but they want to be in the school and just the whole community thing is important. And, and that also included things like more housing or improved housing or housing developments. I mean, there was quite a few comments as I went through that with that.
And I think when you came is really close to when the both villages came and talked about their development plans. So, I think.
Yeah.
The timing wise.
And then there was quite a few, I, I put it as a, as a theme actually, as kind of a collaborative management style was preferred. And that was, that's all those things, like somebody pointed out a comment like, don't make a decision, you know. I mean, it was all this collaboration or inclusion or discussion or however you want to phrase it. And then accessibility and visibility, and that was kind of a combination of in buildings and in the community and with the family. So, that was kind of another theme. And then the sixth theme I had was changing student population. And that was including the declining enrollment or the changing enrollment. I can't quite remember if that was open enrollment or just families that were maturing and there weren't children in the houses. But then also there was quite a few comments and I had quite a few listening sessions on increasing special ed students and especially increasing severe special ed needs. So, it was this, I just lumped it all together as changing student population in quantity and height. So, those were the themes that I kind of got when I went back and read this. But you guys live here. So, if you've got a different theme or ideas, I thought maybe that might be a place to start.
Yeah, I can say, I guess from what I've heard, especially during the, or in the strengths, skills, and qualities, you see kind of a pattern of people really wanting somebody visible, relatable, approachable, personable. You know, it's kind of a pattern of, I think, what people didn't see for so long is kind of a strange figure in this, you know, in this office all day where I think people really appreciate the fact that they see you in the halls and you're interacting with kids. And I think that was a refreshing change for people is just to have somebody that's well-acclimated in the school itself and the halls. And, you know, you're not a foreign entity, but people actually know your name and who you are. So, I know I've definitely heard positive things in that respect.
Well, to kind of go down your theme list.
Okay.
You know, finances, we certainly, you know, we had our annual meeting already and it seems that, you know, he's worked very well with Cheryl. We had a balanced budget, which is an amazing feat. You know, we haven't looked, we haven't talked much about referendums yet and that's certainly something that we can look at. But, you know, having a really good feel for budget, I think, is a really big, strong thing that you've really worked well with Cheryl on and really have a good grasp. So, I think we've met that goal of theirs.
Well, and I know you said right away, it's whatever you didn't come in knowing, you'll figure it out. And, you know, you're open to, to anything new that, you know, you need to know, so.
Yeah, I would just say from, from the list, the finance piece, if the notion or the desires out there in our community to get off in every two-year referendum cycle, well, I would share that notion, but then we need to decide what we're willing to commit to because the bottom line is we need a referendum, period. I wouldn't have to know much about finance to know that if we did not have a referendum, then we would be talking about severe cuts. Many people cuts. So, to me, that's a, that's a point very much so worth noting. So, then I think part of maybe our conversation even moving forward with our community this spring with our future search is to put that out there. Some of the feedback we received in the past is that people would prefer maybe not to have this, this every other year thing. Truth be told, from a district standpoint, that's nuts. I mean,
Right, if, I mean.
From a manpower and a time.
If you could do a longer chunk of time, it would.
So, if the community is, they're willing to support a three-year or four, anything more than two, well, then at least we're not dedicating hundreds of hours every other year to referendum planning. So, I think that's a picture that if we painted that picture perhaps during our future search, that would be helpful for us is that we've received this, we've heard this, we share the sentiment. That being said, we know and hopefully, but at this point, it seems you know, we can't survive without this. So, then what are you willing to support? I mean, I, I remember through the interview process, I even commented on the referendum thing and that I had noticed that because obviously I did a little bit of homework. And someone made a comment about, well, we've never, we've never wanted to do a reoccurring because people don't want to just write a check forever. Okay, if that's the case, if that's still the case, that's fine. But then what are they willing to support? Does it have to be two or could it be a little bit further out? Because, you know, the, the irony of all of this to me, having dove deeper into finance this year than I ever had to before. I mean, when I talk to people, like Baird people, and we talk about this and the cycle that we've been in, they're like, say that again?
Yeah.
You've done this every two years for the last 10 years and it's how much? Almost 20% of our budget? They're like, that's not an operation referendum. I mean, that's, you need that.
Right, right.
That's their comment. It's like, well, yeah.
Keep the doors open or?
Yeah, it's basically like, wow.
Not just lights and.
No, yeah.
Well, it's not a facilities problem.
Right, right, exactly.
This is people.
Yeah.
This is positions, this is programs.
And I think that's what people, excuse me, Jordan, sorry to interrupt, but I think that's what many people fail to understand is that when, well, first of all, let me reference the letter that was written to the WIAA. I mean, the, it was so stark to me, the drop-off in numbers, you know, where we, where we've, where we were. Well, that was nothing compared to the, when my son-in-law was here, they had a gazillion kids. But the issue is when declining enrollment hits a district, it's not like you can commensurately, oh, 20 kids, one staff. 20 kids, one staff. It just doesn't happen that way. Because I know that's one of the questions I'm going to get tomorrow at the village meeting is, well, why don't you just? You can't do that because you still have programs and initiatives and state mandates and you still have things that you need to do. And in order to continue doing that on an effective level, you need do re mi. And that's just the nature of state finance. Yeah, you need do re mi. But that's the nature of, of the financial situation in the state of Wisconsin for school districts. And, you know, and then you got other people say, well, yeah, but the governor, yeah. What was put in the budget this year doesn't begin to even touch what's been, you know, taken out of budgets. And, and again, I think it's the mentality, and education kind of needs to take place for people to truly understand. I mean, many people, it's just like, duh, duh, nah, it doesn't work that way. It's.
So, for, and for us, it's a multifaceted problem because as enrollment declines, we lost the pupil count. Property values skyrocketed.
Yes.
So, now it became, you can do as a double-edged sword. We, we lost state funding in two ways and more burden got placed on the local taxpayer.
Sure.
So, I mean, that's a part of it too where, you know, in some informal conversations that I've had with people, just happenstance. Just briefly explained, like, once you kind of dig in a little bit deeper and look at the situation, I mean, I described it in one situation as like the perfect storm financially unfortunately happened here.
Just like Northern Wisconsin.
Exactly.
Property rich, declining enrollment. Here we are.
Disaster.
And you're right next to very competitive schools that can offer a wide variety of opportunities.
Right, right.
Yeah, so just to say we're going to start knocking things off.
That's right, that's right.
Then we become a non-option for anyone that has any mobility.
So, I haven't paid enough attention to the votes and the passings. Anybody know if these, the referendum are close or the vote?
It was 60-40 the last time, which I think was the best margin that we've ever had. But I think along those lines, I think this future search will really help with the engagement piece because I think for so long it was this disconnect between what's going on in the school and people felt this isolation of all I'm doing is writing money. I don't, I don't feel connected. I don't know what's going on. There's no trust, you know, there's no accountability. So, it's really about like building that relationship and educating people and kind of, I think, regrouping as to kind of making people feel that their money is going somewhere worthwhile and they aren't just writing a check, but, you know, that emotional piece of trusting what we're doing and that your money is valuable and what we do with it, you know, can make you feel worthy, I guess, of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, part of tonight is not only to reflect, but then also if we have the opportunity to set some goals, unless you think you've got all your goals set, I don't know where you are in the process.
No.
But based on the conversation you've had, I think this finance one sounds like a, some sort of a goal.
So, one thing, sorry.
That you might want to.
Go ahead. I think we're going to say the same thing.
Yeah, so one thing that's important, you've probably heard us saying this future search and whatever. So, Drew Hawick, who's worked a lot with NASDA, WASB, was at the state conference as well. I guess was supposed to, but was ill. Pneumonia. When he came back from Haiti, I talked to him today, so that's why he was out. But anyways, so Drew Hawick does consulting with districts. They conduct what's called a future search. So, I'm sure you're familiar with that concept or have at least heard of it. So, Drew was at my first new Supes workshop in August and it, already at that point, it was intriguing enough. I started, the wheels started spinning just kind of seeing, not even knowing this stuff, but seeing what I had seen in the first couple of months and then having conversations with the board and the admin just regarding the possibility of trying to do something where we brought in the community to engage them and to engage ourselves in some open dialogue around things like finance, facilities, curriculum, vision, where do we see this going? And I guess, kind of how I sold it, so to speak, to the board was, you know, I, we all have ideas and I think they're pretty good ideas in a lot of ways. But for me or for us to walk out and say, hey, here's what eight people decided to do, the rest of you accept it and we're going to plow ahead.
Well, and eight people where half of us haven't even been in this position in a few years, you know.
So, it was kind of at that point, we agreed that this future search where we anticipate 75 to 150 community members in April. So, I mean, we have it on the calendar. We have a design team meeting with Drew on Thursday night. So, really the hope from that, and if I'm speaking out of turn or incorrectly, feel free to correct me. I mean, the hope from that is that we will walk out of that with a very, framed at the very least, framed message from our community that these are the things we value. These are the things that we feel are important. And now to lead us forward, I mean, the ones he's done recently, they have to call them like Future Search 2030 because that's when the 14 kids were born. So, it's kind of thinking of that notion that in the next 10 to 15 years, here's how we want to see our school and our community evolve. Connected to that, I mean, I've been relatively active or at least, you know, communicating with like the Mesa Village Board, the Black Earth Village Board, you know, talking about this whole notion of the gateway to the Driftless Region. It's kind of this, I guess, groundswell of getting on board and communicating with people to let them know that we're serious about it and we want them to be here, we want them to be at the table. And then as we talked about a lot at the conference, like, once we get this and we have some direction and then we set some goals, well, then we need to stick to them and we need to share and we need to be transparent and communicate the heck out of that information because that'll be how we then build more trust and build more belief and buy-in for what it is we're trying to do here.
Sure. Well, then let's, let's, let's finish going through this because it sounds like this will be a good foundation for your meeting in April or the participation at a greater level.
Right, absolutely.
Or maybe you can even, you know, come up with some themes so that, again, I don't know how Drew handles it, but usually there's kind of directed conversation, not just wide-open conversation.
Yeah. Yeah, there will definitely be some direction to it. Our own themes and our own topics.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like finances is something.
Very, very well aware, working very hard to learn and obviously having a business manager helps.
It's great that your district has a business manager.
I feel much different if we didn't.
Right, I think we all would, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Sure, having Cheryl in that position and having the two of you be able to work together, we'd feel very comfortable if we worked that way.
It's hard to imagine what you can give else, like, you know, I mean, if you took down all of that, what would be left, right? It's hard to, yeah.
Yeah.
I would say it's pretty safe to say that policy would not be happening for sure.
Yeah.
Maybe not future search.
Not important, yeah.
So teacher retention too, just to speak to that, I mean, we're, I'll know Thursday.
Yep.
Where that goes, we, um, Employee Relations Committee sat down and looked at a plan, um, a draft, a draft plan for teacher compensation.
Compensation, yeah, yeah.
Yep, and, um, kind of agreed to that in principle. And I shared that with our teachers' federation, they are still unionized. So I shared that with them in December and then they were going to run that through the channels of the various buildings and their stakeholders to, uh, get some feedback, but very promising, uh, very teacher friendly, in my opinion, in our opinion, um, demonstrating support and wanting to show them that they are valued financially and in a way that we think is, quite frankly, like, this is our best attempt to honor them, but yet honor our district as well financially.
And it really talks about the retention, it talks about, you know, providing our teachers with, uh, very designated, you know, they're gonna know where they're gonna go. They, they, they could go five years in the future and know, have a really good sense of, okay, this is where I can be. So really, that was one of the things that the teachers were really asking for in the compensation.
Yeah. Clarity, um, incentives for future education, which obviously with the licensing didn't change and that all went over again. So incentives for advanced degrees, um, some supplemental pay opportunities for years of service. Um, so, so I'd buy a spew for sure. I think it's good.
But I think even indirectly, the he- the fact that we had that conversation was something that they haven't had in a while. So the fact that we've been listened and went back and worked with them is a positive step actually.
Yeah. Community involvement, you've already, yeah, connected quite well, you know, you, like you just mentioned, you've been talking with the village boards, you've gone to many meetings, you're now an Alchemist member, you, you've done a lot, um, I don't wanna speak more to your community involvement.
I think the biggest thing for me, I, I think I even talked about this and sometimes, quite frankly, I do watch my mouth because I say this in front of people and I realize they don't live here. Then I'm like, gosh, I'm so there. But I mean, I, I said it and I, I meant it, obviously, um, I've worked in four districts in my career and I, to me, it's always important that if, if you're gonna get a paycheck there and say that it's important and it's important to be there. So that was a huge point of emphasis for my wife, our family, and two daughters go to school here. And for me, that was never a question. And then coming to, you know, basketball games, volleyball games, um, football, whatever, whatever, uh, the play, um, concerts, that's just, it's kind of how we've been, what we've done, so that hasn't really been a change. And once again, I know I talked about this with this group, I mean, in a small school, yeah, you're probably one of the most, um, visible people in the community, whether you like it or not. So it's important to be at those events and don't have to make a scene, but be there to show your support, that's important to me, so. And that's what I like about school, is kids and kids' activities.
That's good, you're noted.
So I think that goes right to visibility.
I think that was one of the, the things, you liked kids or something, or?
Yeah, there was some.
Do you actually like children?
Do you actually like kids or do you just?
As funny as that sounds, sometimes I really wanna ask people that question.
We know, education, I know.
It's like, do you like kids?
Yeah.
Cause you struggle to see if they do. Which is sad, but it's true. Collaborative management. I try, I think, um, that for me has probably been the one thing that I feel I think the deepest about is when do you just say, this is what we have to do? And then when do you take the time to like let everything trickle through? I mean, to be honest, like in administrative meetings and you put a topic on there and in certain cases guide pretty heavily, in other cases you leave it a bit more open-ended and then you just kinda see where it goes and then so that's, I think that's what I, that, that agonizing word, if there's something that I've agonized over, it's this notion of collaborative leadership, I, I certainly agree with it wholeheartedly, but then there are some times that if everything comes down to a vote and a field goal, you just don't get anywhere either.
Well, that's why you are where you are. If it was all up to everybody deciding on their own, you wouldn't need an authoritative.
Hey Jim. Hi.
So that's definitely, I think, a process, but on the surface, something that I wholeheartedly agree with, it's just that nuance of the right, uh, the right amount of push and the right amount to take a step back and listen.
Well, and your challenge too is that new, half, half of the admin, quarter of them are new, so.
I'm kinda reflecting on what we.
Not necessarily.
The hand and kind of where are we now?
Well bonded. Already collaboratively, you know, works well together.
Well, that, yeah, I mean, just for full honesty in this, uh, safe environment, humanal senior court. I mean, that's certainly been something that we've tried to, I've tried to be foster, openness.
Yeah, and I don't know if the comments were really all collaboration or just, um, being included. I, and I think you've kind of hit on it when you talked about your teacher compensation plan, that they were just, you know, glad that they were being considered, yeah, type, type of thing. Which isn't really a collaborative decision, but it is included.
And I think it goes a lot with, don't forget we're here, kind of a thing, you know, you can, you are the superintendent, make the decisions, but don't forget that we have teacher staff, we have the support staff, we have the, you know, all of those other people within the district, don't forget about us, you know, you need to be collaborative in, in your decisions, making sure that you don't forget anybody. That's kind of how I, I would take it.
No, and I definitely see some things in here, um, now having been here for almost seven months, you know, some of this stuff about, I guess the way I'd almost describe it is like pride, pride of what we have and don't, don't rock the boat. I, I see some of that for sure. And we talked about stuff like that at the convention, especially when you hear someone like Bill Daggett talk. And then you think about like this notion of not rocking the boat, but then everything he talks about would not just rock the boat, but it would capsize the boat.
While you are the water.
So it's like, how do you, um, how do you manage that as well? Where it's like you respect what is and what has been and the people that are a part of that, but at the same time start to perhaps inch forward on some of these things that maybe haven't been for whatever reason. So I think that's, uh, I'm, I'm very cognizant of that fact at this point, uh, that there is a lot of pride in, in what is. So how do we work with people and how do we engage people in a way that recognizes that, but at the same time exposes them and perhaps moves us on some things? And you know this notion of change? I've never been one to change just for the sake of change, I don't have time to do that, I don't know anyone that does. But at the same time, if change is, um, warranted, well then we can't just say, well, we're not gonna do it because we don't like change. If there's, if there's good reason to support it and it's student-centered, student-friendly, well then, sometimes we may have to embrace something that perhaps we aren't the most excited about for whatever reason. So that's, that's definitely a balancing act as well.
Which is another nice thing about the future search is it identifies some main priorities and visions and goals that you can constantly refer back to, is we are one ship moving forward with all these in mind. Kind of narrows the focus and why we're doing what we're doing.
I think visibility and accessibility kind of go back to community involvement, but I think it also goes back to the fact that you have people stopping by your, your home even and, you know, you are ready and available to listen to though, you know, you.
Don't teach you to look out the front window before you open the door.
I dim the lights now.
But I think that speaks to, you know, being accessible and, you know, if you get an email, you're willing to meet with somebody and, you know, it, it takes a right person to be able to sit and listen to somebody and not shoot them away and, you know, you're making them feel heard and making them feel valued, that's a big thing.
Yeah, and I think that, that one, that was wrapped up a lot in, um, buildings, like in buildings and classrooms.
Mean around, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Sure.
And then the, the whole change in student population, I, you've already kind of mentioned that.
Uh, yeah, and there's not a whole lot of superintendent really, I mean, you're, you're gonna go recruit for us? Go get us some new students. You know, I think that's a, that's a difficult one, I think that's more something that we're gonna be able to address more with our future, future search and really developing that plan of how are we gonna promote ourselves? How, how are we gonna become the school district of choice? You know, I think that's, that's really where that's gotta lean, you know?
I'm gonna go directly to that piece, though, I mean, with the special ed thing, I remember that during the interview.
Yes, yeah, we asked that.
I remember the question. I mean, to that end, it's more in how do we collaboratively from admin, the teaching staff, to aides, to whomever, how do we try to handle those situations? Because yes, public school is public school.
And then manage the budget that goes along with it.
Absolutely. How do we, how do we handle those situations to the best of our ability? To try to provide the best educational opportunity for those kids. You know, those are the ones that get tough for me, um, kind of sometimes this notion of like, well, we don't need this or we don't need that or we shouldn't do this or whatever, well, they're someone's kids and they're our kids. And we have a responsibility to them to try to do the best we can. Now, does that mean we just keep throwing more bodies at it? No, but sometimes we may need X, Y, or Z and, and that, with that generally does come price. So I think to me, the biggest thing, cause that whole situation has been, that's been a learning curve as well, is just seeing, you just see different situations and you see different ways of things being handled. And then you try to find out, where do you interject yourself into that process? To have some input and some say on that and to help perhaps lead, if nothing else, um, discussion and reflection on like, what, what is it that we're doing and how are we trying to improve these situations, both for the kids and for us as a district? You know, I've had some very good conversations with our principals and our special ed director regarding these situations. And those are tough ones, they really are, especially with some of the younger kiddos, because they are incredibly challenging.
And they're with you for, what, more years or 10 more years or whatever?
Exactly, yeah. So that's a, that's a true story. Those, those situations do exist and, um, as I say oftentimes, the reason we hire humans and intelligent humans is because we want thinkers. It's a black and white, um, cut and dried, here's what we do. Robots could take our jobs. But it's not, it, it's a very nuanced and thoughtful process that we need to be deliberate about in those situations. I think of some of those conversations, even with a few parents this year. And those are tough conversations, because they live it, just like we do.
So Jordan, um, now that you've been here for almost seven months, um, what are, what are your, um, what do you see as needs or goals or opportunities?
Well, I, I think.
I mean, and we've probably covered some of them, but this is.
I think it's really important, and we've, we've talked about it a lot, but I mean, I think it's really important for us to be sincere with this process, process and to, uh, get the information and then to demonstrate how we are best, you know, taking that feedback and moving forward. From a board standpoint and administrative standpoint, I think it's that, um, notion of as we start to make some perhaps tougher decisions as time goes on, um, to engage in, in the process, but then not be afraid, um, we need to engage in that and not be afraid to have the tough conversation, but then once that works its way through, once again, something that I heard multiple times at the convention, once we make a decision and move on, well now we've made a decision and we move on and support that decision as a board and as an administration, and if we may or may not have loved every aspect of it, that's okay. But we need to move forward in a supportive fashion, uh, because that was the decision of the board or of the district. So then how do we, how do we stay together, I guess, basically, to me? Because nothing will, in my opinion, stifle progress and, and in a positive environment more than kind of that, um, backdoor dissension. We can have tough conversations here, but when we walk out, okay, here's what we're doing. Let, let's support the decision, let's support the district, not then go down and tell our neighbors that was a bull crap choice and, and fragment the decision. So I think to me, that's, that's kind of the key piece is, we're asking for feedback, we need to listen, we need to temper that feedback with what we know and build what we believe and what the community believes is, is a good plan moving forward. And then, and we're gonna have to work, that's the other piece. It's gonna be some effort on all of our part, for sure. And how do our board meetings then look to connect back to the work we're trying to do? Does that structure support what it is we're trying to do moving forward? So I mean, the next six months are gonna be, uh, gonna be a ride. In a good way.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's going fast, that I can say.
It has.
So board, I kind of, you know, pushed my themes out there, but are there any that you had? I mean, you've kind of sound like you are coming up with this future search as a way to kind of do this next step. So, um, you know, we don't have, really have anything real conclusive tonight.
Yeah, I really.
Cause I think you're gonna get there.
Yeah, I, I think that really those goals is something that we're lacking in, um, we have lacked in for many years. And I, I really believe that this future search is what's gonna get us to having those goals, not only as a board, but as a district and as a community. And I feel that that's really what we need and, and kind of moving forward with that, I think we're gonna get there with that. So I'm really excited with having the forward search and, and getting the community involved. That's such a big, big thing that we've missed for many years. This was interesting though, kind of looking back and kind of talk about the themes and just kind of.
And they haven't gone away, have they?
No, they just feel the reflect on them, was very interesting.
I feel like we're in a way better place than we were.
Yeah.
Yeah. As far as I haven't been on the board too long, but progress and movement and.
Jim is our longstanding member here, what do you think? Give us your knowledge.
How much time we have?
Five minutes.
I was looking at number six and what's most important part of superintendent's job. And number two says effective leadership and that, and that, that's a trite phrase.
And that, that's a trite phrase that's used an awful lot that really doesn't have any really meaning. But when you look at, of course, we all wanna be effective in our lives and in our roles and in our jobs. But just in the short time that, that Jordan's been here.
Early, early.
No, you're fine, come on in here.
Yeah, you're fine.
The fact that, that the, having the vision to look at the vision of the district and to make that a priority for, for the board and for the community is what I think is effective leadership. Is to recognize something that, that the district's lacking. Move forward, find a way to get to that vision. And so, I don't know if that's what you're looking for.
Dawn, yes. Just good to hear your perspective from, you know, a longer term than the rest of us on here on the board. Have you been through several superintendents and?
Uh, no.
Just two, just Mark and then-
Well, actually, with, as a, as a principal and-
Right, sure.
And teacher, yeah, many.
Yeah, I've met a few. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, finishing my, this is my last term on the board.
Oh, okay.
So I'm running in April. And it'll be thirty-three years that I've been involved in this case. So.
So you're gonna head to Mexico or someplace?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, thirty years, thirty years, not thirty, thirty years. Uh, no, I, we just remodeled our kitchen.
Oh, okay. Well, that'll help make it sell better, right? Isn't that what it's supposed to do? Add value? Does anyone else have anything that they would like to kind of discuss prior to kind of, well, just to kind of finish up our, our search? And it's been a year. It was interesting when you said, you know, you did, the January was the focus group, so it's been a year now. I mean, that's really crazy to think that. Yeah, so, yeah.
It was a, a difficult process, but one that, that would never, I, I would do again, and the only way to do it is to find the person who we're really looking for. Because it's just, just so time consuming, so much time spent. But it would be, it's a lot like the remodeling of the kitchen.
Yeah.
They carry everything out.
Why do you hire a contractor? Right. And then you have facilitators. Right. You didn't do it yourself, you know? Did you learn from Harvey, did you?
It goes between two thorns, is what this is.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the search is similar to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's well done. Because that's, that's the role of a board.
Oh, right, yeah.
Parts of it could have been shortened up, I mean, I know, I know that some boards don't wanna look at all the averages. Actually, just say, give us five and that's what we're gonna look at.
I think that, I liked that part.
Yeah.
I did. I actually enjoyed that part because then I felt that I really had a true say in who we even brought in. So I liked that part. I mean, it, it took us a while and we narrowed, to narrow it down even in it, but it was really an interesting process. That was fun. Fun to review, I don't even remember how many it was.
It was something that I think is, is, I'm very happy that I was able to be a part of.
Yeah, good.
Good.
Yeah, I would definitely say having the information from the focus groups was very helpful. I think that that helped us even with the questions to ask. And I feel thankful for that because I think we did, it just helped us overall, I think, overall of course, but just because I think it did go so well. And then even though it was a little crazy in the end. It worked out.
One night was crazy, but that was it.
So, yeah.
I agree.
As you call, as you're driving home, yeah.
In a snowstorm, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a horrible snowstorm.
Get back to go to work.
Mr. Hurdeys.
No, A W.
A W. E I P customer of two weeks. Bacon double cheeseburgers than my heart probably should have had. And cheese curds.
The full meal, yeah.
Well, good.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Usually we conclude with some goals and expectations, but you have that kind of on track, so I think, I think we can just conclude.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Drive safe.
Will do.
Very good, very helpful.
It was great working with everybody.
Likewise, yeah.
You're a fun group of people.
Maybe you had some other searches?
Last year I did, this year I don't, I have any right now.
Because this is about the time that you started.
Yeah, yeah. I've got a couple of school districts I'm talking and working with, but they're trying to just-
Well, if you need a testimonial, we can give you a one. Well, thank you so much.
Okay, great, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Heck of a timing.
I know, that was amazing.
Great on.
We did really good.
Well, you're just gonna stay, stay within an hour and then do it.
Absolutely. All right, well, you will, it will be thanks to everyone else for joining us. We can, you just did a review of our future, of our search for the superintendent, I think you figured that out. All right, so we will continue on with the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of January eighth, two thousand eighteen?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mary Beth and Gary. Any questions or changes? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
Uh, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yeah.
And I'll say yes as well. Don't believe we have any public inputs, we can pass that. Um, board president, I just want to kind of just recap a tiny, tiny bit. Our appointment is to meet in February as a board. But the state convention was amazing, we learned so much information. Really, the overall message was to really teach relevant information to children through personalized learning. That was like the big, big point. Kind of talking about the next generation of students, how they're gonna need to stop, solve those complex problems, have the skills for critical thinking, be creative. Really, the one thing I thought was interesting when he asked to name the first presidents, I could have named the first presidents. And to think, you know, stop thinking, teach it, test it, and lose it. I just thought that was a really interesting thing because we really do, and that's kind of that old mentality. Looking at technology that we know, that the technology we know now is not gonna be relevant in another, in another four years. So think of somebody going to school and to a four-year college, what they're gonna learn in that first year is no longer gonna be relevant even by the time they finish their degree. And they can't be a specialist anymore, they're gonna have to know all of those skills, how to be creative, how to be critical thinkers. Personally, I attended a couple sessions on community involvement, strategic planning, and I think we are just totally on the right path doing our future search. Because, and they really talked about involving the community, engagement, making that strategic plan and making it very visible. And we've talked about it even tonight with Rachel, just really getting that public involved and following through on what we're gonna say we're gonna do. And, but knowing what those top priorities are is gonna be such big things, so. Those are just a very few takeaways that I'll say right now. I don't know, Mary Beth or Barb or Gary, you wanna say anything else?
One of the biggest things that I took away is I attend a lot of the sessions on communication and engagement, I was really interested in. But the one thing that stuck out at me, stuck out at me was, stuck out for a while.
Right.
Was the notion of what is engagement and how does it differentiate itself from involvement? And that engagement really has an emphasis on commitment. And so we're asking, whether it be teachers for increased engagement with parents or the admin with staff, or even us as a board, engagement. It's not just involvement, it's not just showing up, it's really commitment. And yes, it's gonna take extra time and extra resources and, you know, as you're sitting in a session listening to schools with all these progressive initiatives that are five times our size, it really puts in a place that our level of commitment is, you know, that much more imperative for each one of us because we don't have the people and the resources. So, you know, it's a challenge for us to say, let's be more engaged and committed when we know we're already so busy and full of stuff. But that was my takeaway, is the hope that through engagement, we can show our commitment to better student achievement and back to our vision and goals that we have to set with the future search.
I think it'll all come up with the future search, but I think we must all, the community engagement thing and really having a plan, you know, to, to get out to people and, and that includes having a media plan. How do you make sure you reach a hundred percent of the people? And one of the comments I remember was, they don't wanna just see you in the referendum, you know, every two years. And hey, we're having a referendum, you vote. And we realized, a lot of people don't even know who the school board is.
Yes.
So we need to find a way to make ourselves visible and transparent.
We need a billboard.
Billboard, that'd be great. Yeah, let's do it.
Gary, anything you wanted to add from your day there?
No, no, not really. I mean, it was, I was only there one day, next year I hope to get there more. But did a lot of good sessions, a lot of good ideas, and that's what you come back with, ideas. Somehow make them applicable to, to your district because obviously not everything you hear, see, or feel, smell, touch is gonna be applying to your district. And, but how do you, how do you come back with those broad ideas and make improvements in your own district?
Absolutely.
And I think that the, the whole notion of the district, as you mentioned, just getting involved with setting the tone by perhaps more, being more engaging with the community would set the tone for the, for the entire district, hopefully.
Absolutely.
It's all about engaging, yeah.
Just a quick incentive, bring it up later.
That works good.
I, I wanna thank the group of board members that attended because it is a commitment. Even for someone like myself that lives in this world of school speak. You come back and you're just, oh. And you know how it is, we walk into conferences, you come back just overwhelmed with all the stuff that you heard and, and then how do you filter those ideas and actually do something tangible with some of the ideas that you heard? So that's our challenge. I will share, I think, a little more detail, as you mentioned, in February. But, yeah, I guess the biggest thing that, that I would just say as a, as a summary takeaway is just kind of taking a step back and looking at the kind of the present reality in education and what is our reality locally? And then what do we, what do we think, what do we believe, truthfully believe, and what are we willing to commit to in terms of providing educational opportunities for kids? I think to me that's, that's the bottom line, is, is taking that step back and looking at present, first, desired, and what are we willing to commit to?
And kind of the uncomfortable conversations that come with change and progress when, you know, a lot of people are used to what they've been doing.
Well, they talked about like, go ahead and change the bus schedule. How much, how much do you think you're really gonna be able to change with the bus schedule? You know, that, kind of looking at that mentality of change is really, really hard. But change needs to happen so that it would continue to be relevant for our kids. And, but it's finding that level of comfort of how fast can we do it or how slow should we do it? And that's really, really such an interesting concept to look forward.
So I also wanna thank the district promoters.
Yeah, it was so good.
It was really good.
Good. All right, that's all I had to say. Jordan, what else you got?
Yep, I'm gonna let Vivian, Rich, Chris, they can decide who wants to jump in and kind of give us their report first and I'll, I'll go at the end. Whoever wants to go first, I'll go first.
All right, I'll go first because I've got plenty on here, but I'm gonna try to go through a part of it pretty quick. So I really broke mine up, even the way I wrote it, it was really past, present, and future. And past really because I haven't presented you guys since, I think, November, and then we had winter break in there. So the stuff from past, which is really from the last update and before winter break, and I'll just bullet point these pretty quick. Ms. Hauser and FFA moved a whole lot of fruit in about twenty-four hours with their fundraiser, that was amazing to watch, that was incredible. Ms. Adameino and Ms. Haas directed the winter music band choir and jazz band concerts, that was a fantastic show. Lots of field trips have been going on in an attempt to, and I actually wrote down the word engage, and extends student learning. So it really make it so it really is applicable to them when they were interested, wanting to do it. But things like going to the bowling alley, community concerts, the airports, all things to really connect to the classroom. Ms. Stotts organized the middle schools junior P B right before winter break. And congratulations to Alex, I will not use his last name, in eighth grade, who won it in advance. And then all staff took on a positive behavior referral challenge the week before winter break. Our goal is to hand out a hundred positive behavior referrals that were reported and we hit it. So it was great. There's a lot of smiles and a lot of kids who don't usually get recognized, but they were able to for this. So smiles everywhere, kudos to the staff for doing that. Our present, well, we've been working on since winter break. Staff have been working on being transparent with learning targets for students, really by doing that through best practices. Student survey a while back that I had referenced, they had talked to, we tried to understand what was the purpose of everything they were doing. So learning targets, we can really try to be very transparent about that. And helps students, helps staff and students know where the student actually needs help later on. So we're really being very upfront about what is we're trying to learn, why we're trying to learn it, and being committed to what if they know what or don't know what. So some of that gets into P L C work eventually, but it's a, it's a general thinking of, of education anyway. And then staff did do some work on that in collaborative teams and some talking, so it was fantastic. Ms. Churchill is creating a maker space in the high school L M C, if you're not familiar with that. It's basically, it's a, an area, more and more schools are having them, where sometimes it's just a collection of materials where kids can just go in and just grab stuff and just start creating. Sometimes it's digital, sometimes it's paper. Sometimes there's games or, you know, not ones where they're, you know, playing cards, but where there is some sort of strategizing that's going on. She's been talking with Scott Wisher about possibly looking at some Lego robots that you can program so you start getting into coding and those kinds of things. So really need ways to try to engage the students, to try to get students into the library to do, well, to really look at it as more than a library, but to really look at it as a, a learning commons, kind of area where students are talking and problem solving, being creative and critical thinking, all those, those proceeds and pick 'em up. Let's see here, Mr. Wong and Ms. Schaefer, they've already coordinated the high school course registration for two thousand eighteen and nineteen. We've got almost everybody signed up for classes, middle school is next. Mr. Moyer and the middle school team wrapped up map testing and that went extremely well, they got through that so darn quick. So it was fantastic. Starting to work a little bit with interested staff at this point on how to access more of the map data that's there. I'm not gonna push it too hard because we might be looking at a little different assessment package going forward. I think Jordan will talk about that at some point, but still the idea of looking at data to help us guide instruction is, is far as we'll deal. School improvement team recently met regarding our practice in vocabulary instruction. And the team now is really taking on some leadership at this point of wanting to get past just sharing ideas and actually modeling and practicing with staff, so they have some applicable strategies they can use. The reason we're focusing again on vocabulary, content vocabulary, was to add more words to what we can comprehend, really help us with re-comprehension skills later on. So that's where we're at right now. As far as the future, lots of planning going on, we have lots of test prep that's coming up. We've got the A C T coming up on February twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth, that's kind of a big deal. That planning's been going on for a while. A P testing will be in May, Aspire testing, May, Forward testing, is that April, May?
It's in April, yeah, scheduled in April.
Okay. Some big events coming up, mid-winter, mid-winter week is coming up, February twelfth through the seventeenth. That'll conclude with the dance on the seventeenth. Prom, I'm sure you've probably seen some of the planning for the prom fashion show, that's coming up, I think in just a couple of weeks here. And then prom itself is on the fifth. Already looking at end of the year as well, the scholarship night that comes up and the graduation, lots of planning and purchase order requests already going off for that, so it's crazy to think we're already thinking about that, but we are. We've had a lot of staff involved with all of those different events that are coming up, so there's some names just to throw out there. Ellen Wright, Rose Davy, Kurt Wong, Tammy Schaefer, Kim Hauser, Megan Billskember, Dan Jurgens, Dave Purdy, Kathy Hag, all have their hands in some of those tests and events. And then just one last group, and this wasn't in my notes, but it's a group that I never really have to report on, but I feel like they need to be mentioned, and that's our educational assistants and spec ed staff. Their group that maybe they don't get the accolades, but without them, we'd be in a whole lot of hurt in the building. So I just wanted to name them off, so if anybody in the public does see this, I'd love for their names to be heard. But Megan Crowe, Janice Doyle, Chris Ball, Sherry Herring, Cindy Page, Kelly Payne, Tracy Powell, Mary Brapp, Heather Roberson, Heather Schamber, Lisa Teis, Stacy- Teis, Stacy Thomas, Sandy Wongkamp, and Melinda Ziegler. So all this other stuff is just not happening. All that's still there. So there we go.
Questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. Chris already touched on the map testing, so I won't revisit that one. On my board report, there's just games that are coming up. Middle school girls' basketball. We did hire Ryan Benreifer to coach eighth grade girls. And what we did this year, because of our low numbers at eighth grade, I think we ended up with seven. To this point, speaking with Coach Benreifer, we have not had all girls, all eighth grade girls had a practice and/or a game yet because they've been sick, forgot their gear, whatever it has been. So what we did was, before we started the season, to make it plausible to play a seventh and eighth grade schedule, we took the top three or four who they thought could handle eighth grade. We put them up on the eighth grade team, just to balance the teams, to make sure we can play a seventh grade and an eighth grade schedule this year. At least give the eighth grade girls competition at their own level. So we have that going on. High school girls' basketball tomorrow night is Badger Honor Flight Night. So they will be honoring them, taking donations, selling T-shirts. We'll mention that during the game. Dennis Wood and some of his fellow veterans will be presenting the colors tomorrow night for the National Anthem. So that'll be cool to be here. So if you're open and available, that's always a great night to recognize those people in the sport, the Badger Honor Flight. Boys' basketball, they're playing well. They've only had two losses. Not that the girls aren't playing well. The girls actually have been playing a lot better, high school girls, but boys, I believe they have two conference losses. They're following New Glarus, who is ranked either number one or number two in the state. So they're doing really well as well. And then you can see, and my, I'd forgotten it in the past, so I wanted to make sure I gave these guys their co- those. High school boys' swimming, doing very well. And high school boys' hockey, we just had a Rock the Rank Night on the sixteenth. And I went over to watch that one. It was interesting. It was fun to watch. Some were high school kids who had never been to a high school hockey game. Band was phenomenal. Even Anjella came back and said, you know, I've actually enjoyed that more than one night than I do playing basketball games. It was so much fun. It's intense. It really was. And actually, the Heights Saut, Maureb, River Valley team won. They won in the last thirty seconds. They scored a goal and then went in four to three. So it was even a great night for the win. So open positions for next year, or I'm sorry, this year yet, I'm still looking for head track and field coach, which I think that's coming, coming here pretty soon. I've got to interview somebody either this week or beginning of next week. And then high school assistant baseball. And then I am down two coaches now next year for football. So we do have only two high school coaches next year. Couple other things I want to touch on with you guys. Students of the Quarter, we just had that last Friday. Chris and I were able to attend that with the optimist, Brooks, Luke, and Kylie Byteam, who are students of the quarter. Middle school conference, our future, I really wanted to touch base on this because I don't know where we're going with this Badger Conference, but what has happened this year is that some of the area of schools that we can't sport an A and B team. So some of the schools are asking the conference to not schedule us in the future. So we will no longer play Reedsburg, Bearaboo, Sauk. The Dells has joined our middle school conference. They're no longer interested in playing us because we can't sport two teams. And all of them are coming, like Maureb volleyball, their eighth grade has forty girls. We show up with a gate. So we only play, and we try to tell them, we'll play two if we can play two, but they don't want that. That's too inconsistent for their schedule. So they've asked us, but they didn't ask me. Unbeknownst to me, they let the conference commissioner schedule it though. They're no longer interested in playing Heights. So a couple of things have happened with that. I've started exploring the idea of maybe changing for our middle school conference as far as volleyball, boys' and girls' basketball. It would be more the, right now, we're gonna play River Valley next year in junior high, but I'm looking at Bosque, or not Bosque, Barnabell, New Glarus, Bellville, just to pick some of them up. So we can look at still a ten game schedule. An independent type thing doesn't interest me because then you're kind of at the mercy of everybody fitting you in. But right now, we're with the Badger, and I wrote down, some of the teams we're gonna be playing next year, because I literally got this this morning when I was at my conference. We're gonna be traveling to McFarland, Manona Grove, Badger Ridge, Monroe, Oregon Prairie, Prairie View, Maureb is our closest, and Savannah Oak. So a lot of the Verona, but the one that, the ones that I'm concerned about is we're now going to McFarland, Manona Grove, and Oregon. So we're gonna have a little more of a travel. It, it's not always the travel that concerns me, but now we're starting to get kids out of school even earlier for four or fifteen starts. And now we have to start looking at that and say, is it worth us being in this conference in the long run and all that travel and getting kids out of school? So right now, I've explored with those other schools, River Valley, like I said, Barnabell, New Glarus, Bellville, they're all open to playing us. But again, we'd be more of an independent. The other thing that would change is they don't play volleyball, boys' basketball, girls' basketball. They flip-flop, boys' and girls' basketball. So they actually play volleyball. Girls' basketball follows. Boys' basketball starts in about another month. So they're, they're a little bit, it'd be different for us, but still the earlier start times. The other, the other comparative piece that I look at is, you know, where are we at as far as schools, our size? When you look at Manona Grove, Oregon, I mean, we're at a hundred and forty kids, if we're lucky, in the middle school at times. But even if we're at that number, Sauk, all of them, they're three, four times our size. So even some of their B teams that we play are way better than some of our A kids. I will say, even though we have low numbers, this is a shining light for, I guess to me, I look at it as a positive, you got a negative for them is Juana Key can't even field a seventh grade, A or B level girls' basketball team. They're telling everybody they're a C level and don't, don't bring anything above the low B because they don't want to play. So even Juana Key is having numbers, but their number thing's a little bit different. All their kids are in the travel ball.
They're playing club.
So they, they can't get them to play school ball. Where ours is kind of the opposite. We only have a select number that either ask or only play in club ball. But when we get here, we get more of them. So I think Ryan told me he had like eight, maybe nine, ten-ish seventh graders playing. But when they, when it comes to school ball, we have fourteen, thirteen seventh graders. Whereas you can, the other way, we're, we're getting more of our kids to play because the parents like the schedule. They like the convenience. So it really works well for us. But I'm just kind of giving you the heads up. I don't know that, I mean, nothing drastic's gonna change, but it's probably one of those things that I'm gonna keep looking at to see what's gonna be best for our kids. I emailed Jordan and Chris and I wanted to let you guys know of the Sauk Health Foundation, and I have been in contact. I think we just got another grant for a fifteen hundred dollars for a portable AED machine. And that was one of our needs because here at the middle school, high school, we have just an AED by the gym, but we do do a lot of outdoor activities and, you know, sports and everything that's outside. We don't have anything outside. And so they began asking me, what else do you need safety wise? And that's what I brought up, was a portable AED. Jim Wicket came in the building, did a check on our devices and said, you know, you need to upgrade this one out here soon. It's getting outdated. But if you go with something new, let's work together and I'll get you on the, get you better pricing. But it's more of the AED pads and things that are interchangeable to what they have. So that's kind of what we've worked together on is whatever the EMS has, we're gonna try to do. And I think that one of the elementaries are both have the same device already. So it's really, it's just unhook one device, hook up the other one and go instead of having to take the pads off and switch everything out. So the portable AED probably will get finalized here in the next month, or the donation will be coming. So the, the foundation has been really good. They're, they're continually asking me, what do you need? What can we help you with? And it's life-saving, health-type things that they want us, they want to engage in, with us. So that should be coming sometime soon. And then finally, today, I was actually, and I have to go back in February, we've been talking about technology. I was at a conference, cyberbullying, social media, and high-tech challenges. And this Dr. Justin Patchen from UW O'Clare was the guest, was the speaker. It was, it was very interesting, very interesting, very in-depth about the amount of, just the things going on. The bullying, the psycho bullying, the sexting, the, you know, and he even talked policy, even video or cell phones in classrooms, and just the things that should not be allowed and are happening. And he went through this whole, he said, here's what my partner and I did. We did a kind of a, just randomly went on like Instagram and found this, I don't know what her name was, it was a Sammy one, two, three, four. And they thought, well, let's see what we can find out about this person. Without paying any money, let's go on and just Google her and start looking for things. They ended up finding her car, her date of birth, her family, or how, like, anything you can imagine, they found it without ever paying a dime. And the pictures that she posted, he showed some of these things, and she, with her permission, of course, but it was just so in-depth of, even though you think it's gone or the things that are happening, it just reiterates to us as administrators that, you know, you really have to emphasize with these kids, the damage that can be done for the long term. Or even as adults, where we're not taken care of, you know, as he said, you get to first grade, you're learning this, you go to second grade, you're learning this, you get to third grade, you just progressively, you're learning things and like, but when it comes to cell phones, your parents give it to you and say, there you go, don't be dumb. And you don't teach them. And it was, it was really good. It was a, it was a great session. Again, we talked a lot of, I sat with some people from Winnicott County, I don't know. Yeah, that, they were trying, we were trying to figure out where each other were from, but Winnicott County, I've never heard of, but, yeah, they had never heard of Heights. So we're, but just to hear what they were technology-wise and the struggles and things they've gone through, because that was the first part of the day, it was just about technology. Where are you at as a district and what do you have? And then Dr. Patchen came in later. So very in-depth, very good. I think the next one is in February. It's a follow-up to this one. So no, that was all I had, but it was, it was good stuff.
Yeah, tech is crazy. And, you know, the thing that instilling your kids is whatever you post today will be available for your employer to see.
Yeah.
Some year down the road. It's, but it's such a weird concept for them to think about.
Rich, just one question. Kid, hockey plays at the, in Bradisak? Or where?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I can tell you how to get there, but you know, as far as you ask me.
I'm familiar with St. Vinnie's and, yeah, St. Vincent and Paul's right, like near that area.
Right, right.
Well, I was gonna say, would you go in across the bridge, hang a right, and just keep on going? I mean, don't take the bridge back over in sixty, I mean, just, just keep on going.
Yep.
So I don't know where St. Vinnie's is, but as you keep.
I think it's Milwaukee.
You're, you're gonna feel like you're leaving town.
The quarters, kind of, maybe a little too far.
Depends on which way you go, I guess.
There you go.
Seventeen hundred Tower Street.
So that's the easiest way. I could just take that right, just go all the way up and right at the edge of town where the residential ends, you just take a left. And I think the fairgrounds is right there. There's something right there, a couple of industries, but it's kind of set right in the middle of all the industrial places. So, yeah, it's a good time. It's, the kids are doing well. We have three boys playing. I think next year, we're projected, I think, six of them will be playing. And some of that has to do with age.
Neither.
Yeah. So they're, they're doing really well this year.
Thanks, Rich.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I always get razed for talking too long. So I'm gonna see if, you know, this can be my shortest board report ever. I don't know. So a couple of things I have on the report. And one, you know, I know you've heard about Dr. Hartwood now a couple different times, but what was nice, last Monday, we actually got to see him in person and hear him for three hours. So I have a much better sense of, you know, what Dr. Hartwood's all about and, you know, how he'll be able to, you know, help the district. You know, and one of the things I said, that this is like a nice bridge between the trauma-sensitive schools, the stuff that Sarah Daniel came and talked with us about. And it's kind of like, so what are some more specifics, next steps, you know, that we want to move toward? And I just put some of the, I called them major talking points. Those were the things that really resonated with me, you know, as I was listening and I went back through my notes and looked at the handouts that he had given. And these were the things that came across to me. So that whole idea, yes, learning should be fun. And, and really thinking about that as a teacher, and that really hit me, when students vote to be in your classroom. It's like, wow. It's like, we all need to reflect on that, you know? And I just thought that was important. Engagement, you've talked about community engagement, but we talk a lot about student engagement, you know, and it's not, it's not just about seat time. It's not even about how many minutes you say you're devoting to instruction. It's how many of those minutes are students really engaged in learning, you know, and are active. And, you know, and that's why we've had some other, you know, speakers come and talk about, you know, active engagement and trying to get kids, you know, having more strategies that, you know, have everybody involved, you know, but I think that's still something that we're all, you know, continuing, continuing to work on. I really liked this whole idea about building the skill sets of our regular ed staff. You know, we talk a lot about our special ed staff. We talk a lot about our educational assistants, training them. But, you know, he had this idea of, you know, because the whole RTI pyramid, the idea is, you know, at the top, you've got that fifteen percent. And sometimes, as, you know, regular ed people in the classroom, we're just always thinking, how can I get this kid, this help that they need out there? And he said, let's turn that around and think about how can I be the person that can help the kid? You know, instead of how am I pushing them out? How am I, you know, building my own skill set so that I can be more engaging, so that I can reach kids, so I can do what I need to do? You know, and I like his quote, you know, you get to be an elite teacher by working with difficult kids. It's like, all of us can be successful teachers, the easy ones, the ones that want to learn, the ones that are so thrilled about learning and know all the rules and can do all the rules. But it's like, it takes somebody very special, you know, and working with challenging kids are, you know, what builds our skills. The whole idea of relationships, you know, and it's like, I feel like I try to, I beat this with a dead horse all the time, but it's like, relationships, it's, a kid does not learn from someone that they don't have a relationship with. It's that simple. You know, and there's like a famous quote about your children learn from those they love, you know? And it's like, you know, if we don't, if we can't build those relationships with kids, we get nowhere with them. You know, and he talked about, you know, that point seven seven effect size. So like, you know, like a one point oh would be like a perfect effect size. So point seven seven is considered a really, really high effect size, you know? And the research says, it's like, it doesn't really matter your content knowledge, that that has such a minimal impact on the learning of children. It's the relationships that really have the impact, you know, on that learning. You know, so it's like, you know, yeah, we could have PhD professors in our schools, but they can't get it with kids. Kids still wouldn't learn anything, you know? And, you know, just some of the things that he, you know, tried to get across about that whole idea of relationship building and how that has to be the adult's responsibility. It's not the child's responsibility to build a relationship with us. It's our responsibility to build it with the child, you know? And, you know, just that, you know, how can we be calm and self-regulated so that, and that goes back to the trauma stuff, you know, because that is the thing that kind of pushes the kids away, especially if they have a background, a tough background, or any trauma in their background. It's like the minute that adults become irritated, dysregulated in any kind of way, that that's when, you know, we lose the kids. You know, we just have to have that unconditional commitment to build the relationships. You know, so he's gonna be back on February first. That's when, you know, he's really gonna be working with the elementary staff to dive into what did the best screener tell us about kids, you know? And so he's gonna meet with each elementary team, you know, like first grade, second grade, third grade, to look at the results of their particular students. And then after school on that day, he's gonna have like a professional development around intervention strategies and, you know, some of those high-impact strategies that, you know, if we all use, that they can make the most impact on kids. So hopefully, we'll have a, maybe even another time to do some more intervention stuff, you know, before the grant runs out. But, you know, that will be a big day. So that's an important thing. Okay, the other thing coming up, and I thought I'd give you some handy-dandy, you know, handouts, and these are yours to keep. And you can hand out to other people, you know, or if you have a business that you go to or a partner, you know, that could be something to do.
Intend if you have a business or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, but, so, and most of you, I think, were around to hear about the Child Development Fair last year, and that was our first annual. So this is our second annual Child Development Fair. So we're really excited. And Becky Shutz is taking the lead this year, you know? So it's like, you know, Sharon kind of helped set up the stage for that. But now that Becky is doing the early childhood class, she's taking on that responsibility, you know? But it's in conjunction with all of us. And so on that day, it'll be, all of the special ed staff will be working that day from, you know, eleven to seven, you know, to cover those times. And we chose, that's a, a professional development day. So it's a day when school is not in session. And so that's why we can have access to Black Earth and really, you know, make the most out of that. So, yeah, just a reminder, it's a mixture of community organizations and vendors. It's an opportunity for all children two to five to be screened in, you know, motor cognitive language articulation, you know, both gross and fine motor, social emotional development, that type of thing. And then also, and then in the gym will be vendor setup and vision and hearing screening is a part of that as well. It fulfills our child find obligation, you know? And we still have tons of appointment time available. So if you know anyone that has a child at this age, you know, encourage them to, you know, give Courtney a call, make that appointment. And it also serves as the 4K orientation night, you know? So the 4K teachers will be there in their rooms, and they're gonna be, I think, having some things kind of going on in there to help parents understand what the You know, so the four K teachers will be there in their rooms, and they're gonna be, I think, having some things kind of going on in there to help parents understand what the four K program's all about.
Can I ask a question about, um, I don't know how to, I don't know how to do this, but, when you have a speaker like that, are you generally seeing from staff that are open to kind of, you know, self-reflection on these kind of things, or is there generally some resistance on, you know?
I think there's some of both, you know, um, and some speakers are more engaging than others and really kind of get people to think, you know? I, I think Sarah Daniels was someone that I think we had a lot of positive feedback from, you know, when she came and, you know, Dale maybe knows a little bit more about feedback here, but I think everybody, I, I think people genuinely, genuinely try to see what they can gain from that. You know, and it's like, I think a human nature, some people are really, really open to learning and growing and really see that, and some people, you know, aren't so much.
Yeah, and I just kind of, in my mind, like, how can we better, you know, how can we have a conversation with those people? It's not just, this is what you need to do because they're here, you know, and they're professional and you need to listen to them, but, okay, if you have some sort of dissent, then let's have a conversation about it and maybe you can, you know, and, I know again, that takes time, but it's, it's kind of one of those things, like, how do we, again, if we're all trying to move in one direction, how do we get everybody on board where they're feeling that we're not just telling you what you need to do, but, we're having a conversation and, you know, I don't know.
And sometimes people have to see success somewhere before they buy into it. You know, so that's kind of goes along with the professional learning communities and things like that, that sometimes, you know, those people that you're working with and you're seeing that something's working for them, then you're more open to it, you know? I think the principles may be in, um, you know, your staff meetings and things, you have opportunities to kind of, follow up with some of the ideas that come across from speakers and have a more open conversation. It's harder when you have everybody, you know, in the room and, you know.
It's a big, it's a big picture, you know, building relationships with kids. You know, we all want, give examples, give specifics. You know, specific strategies, you know, teachers always, well, all of us want those specific strategies, and that's part of what we need to do. Just to talk about it, try to get specific strategies. Do some ideas that actually, teachers can.
Try this and save this.
We did survey, um, staff and, and overall, the, the response was good. We got lots of comments on, what was working, what wasn't working. Strategies is one. I think one of the biggest challenges though, is, there's not a manual on how to engage a student and how to work with trauma. And, because we don't always know what's going on, and as much as we want concrete strategies, the idea of building a relationship isn't, uh, do A, B, and C, and okay, you've built a relationship, you're ready to go. It, it could take a lot of time. And I could try every strategy in the book, and maybe I'm not the right mix, maybe, maybe Rich is the one that they need at that point. In this particular case, Dr. Hartwood also talked a lot about collaborative time to talk about, not necessarily what the kid is doing, but what can be different. And really exploring every avenue that's out there. Some of this is just a different way of thinking though, too, um, that it's not a checklist, it's, we gotta be creative in what we do. So, and, I think one that came up in the survey is, for us even as a district, we have to differentiate for staff. Where are people at? And some people are very ready to say, I want the time in order to work with the student. I want time to talk with others in order to differentiate my strategies. And there's others who are more, I need maybe some more bare bone basics here. And that's great information for us then, so. We're all learners.
That's a conversation right there.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Yeah, to that end, I think, one thing we reflected on as an admin team after we had Sarah and all, and then just knowing what we know, but we didn't do for some reason, was getting feedback, um, after that first in-service, so that was one thing we prioritized as a team, was to get some feedback, which we have, and we're gonna talk about it a little bit more tomorrow in our next meeting. But I think to your point, and then things I just heard here, I mean, I think the stage we're at right now is, kind of establishing some sort of common language and understanding of some of these concepts, exposure to some of these philosophies and ideas. And then, yes, the, the challenge and why we need good leaders, strong leaders, is because then once you have that kind of umbrella per se, well then, yes, how does Dale take that message in the staff meeting where you have a bit more intimate, comfortable setting? And now build on that, not just have it be a one and done.
Yeah.
That, we don't need a one and done. How is Chris? How is Rich? Deb, Vivian, myself, whomever, how do we take that information, make it more tangible, and make people feel comfortable? Kind of empower them to take some steps. So I think that's, that's the piece that we're all aware of, that that's our challenge, that is, not just have it be the, yes, Sarah was here in August. Followed up in January, like, what are you doing? No, that's, that's kind of on us, to that make it more real. We're trying to talk the same language first.
Thanks.
Alright. Well, I know I always talk way too long, so. It's a gift.
Your cork?
Yeah. I was in the survey, predated me, but it was accurate nonetheless.
They don't want to see it.
No, so, um, I, I will be quick. Just a few meetings, which if you have questions, obviously, you can let me know, but I just wanted to share, because when we were, at the conference, we talked about books and book studies. If you really want a book to read, you're interested, I, I have a copy or two I could borrow you. I think I have the first, second, and third edition now in my collection. But I could, I could borrow one, uh, we could even get you one if you really didn't want to mark it up, one, uh, with a bunch of highlights in it. But we did this as an admin book study, kind of to springboard us into speaking a more common language and to understanding, um, professional learning communities at a, at a bit deeper level as an admin team. And, uh, we're now just kind of in the process of, what is this gonna look like for us, uh, next year and moving forward? So one piece of that is some professional development. We are extremely lucky. The PLC, God bless you. Uh, the PLC Institute through Solution Tree is in Madison. Uh, the eighteenth to the twentieth, I believe, I memorize those dates now, the eighteenth to the twentieth of July. Huge conference in terms of, we're lucky to have it that close.
I, that's interesting. So I went to one of their sessions. That was very interesting.
So, we are, we are sending a group, um, so the admin team, and then we're gonna have one representative from each level as well. So we're planning to send eleven, uh, to Madison, uh, for the PLC Institute in July, uh, which will kind of then be our, our framework for what are our activities, what, how are we going to start this next year? Understanding that the whole notion of go slow to go fast, but at the same time, we need to start somewhere. Can't just talk about it forever. So that'll kind of be the, the plan. And I think we're, we're, we're ready to at least take that next step and to have that. We've had the conversation with district leadership team, uh, the notion of collaboration, obviously. You'd be hard pressed to find someone that philosophically doesn't want to do it, but then it's the work that comes with it and, and the conversations that we have to have that get a little more difficult.
That commitment engagement thing.
But, exciting and I, just a lot of possibilities and I, you know, people get burnt out by initiatives, and I guess the, the thing that I would say to this is like, and these aren't Jordan's words, the author's words, and I guess my experience then is, once you get to a place, a good place with this, it's, it's not an initiative, it's just the way we do business, it's the work we do. It's how we work with each other. This isn't like, this isn't a fad. It's what we are and who we, who we are. So, we'll, we'll get there, uh, but I, I appreciate the, the admin team of the book study. I don't know if they moan, groan behind my back, but that's okay. I do appreciate their willingness to engage in that conversation. To me, that's the whole point of having a team, is to actually have real intellectual conversations about just stuff like this, not just, um, kind of a day-to-day minutia that we all deal with. So, stay tuned, uh, but moving in the right direction there. And I just wanted to share, this is such a neat opportunity. Where it goes, I don't even know yet, but, so Teal's, I don't know if anyone's ever heard of it, but it's through Microsoft. And we're blessed because it's, I don't know if it's like a, CEO or something, someone that's high in Microsoft grew up in Appleton. And so Teal's obviously with the connection to Microsoft, it's southwest, um, Washington. But this is where it started. But now what they do, uh, what they're willing to do, and they first came to Dane County Superintendent's meeting, then we arranged a meeting with Chris and I with a couple of reps from Teal's. So the thirty-second overview is you can teach, um, AP Computer Science, Introduction to Computer Science, and then the other one was kind of like, um, a bit more of a blended type option or a little less specific, Computer Science Principles. What they do, uh, what, where they help out is they connect us, even though we may or may not have a teacher that's qualified to teach this, Microsoft will help us reach out to our community to find community members that could come into school. And with the assistance of one of our teachers, could actually teach the class. Co-teach. And our investment, so if we went full, full speed ahead on like, say even like AP Computer Science, um, our investment is capped at five thousand dollars. So that's basically just a stipend for the community members, basically paying for their travel. I mean, five thousand dollars would be a drop in the bucket. But that's where Microsoft, that's where this Teal's program comes in. They help provide the curriculum, they help, uh, connect you to people in the community. And basically, it's just because they want more schools to teach computer science, period. So Chris and I met, we talked to a couple of reps. Um, like I said, we're not a hundred percent sure where it's gonna go. Obviously, the piece is, Gary talked about the schedules are kind of moving. And we need a faculty member that has the flexibility, they don't have to necessarily be an expert yet. But they should have an interest in, in some expertise. But I just wanted to bring that to your, um, attention because it's, it's such a neat opportunity. And I think, just to connect to what Rich talked to before, I, all I could hear when he talked was opportunity. Providing opportunities for our kids. You can go to heights, but you can play hockey. What? That's cool. You can swim. That's awesome. But we're still gonna play basketball games. To me, it's all about opportunities for kids. So, um, somehow, some way, maybe not this year, but eventually, we're gonna get there with this because to me, this is a great opportunity. And having sat through what we sat through for three days. We are not exposing kids to computer science in some way, shape, or form, and providing that opportunity is probably providing a disservice to our children. So, where he talked about, uh, in-service, Vivian did a, a good job. I had learning together, engaging, indeed professional conversations, the value of humor, not taking herself too seriously, and then relationships. So, some reoccurring themes emerging tonight at the board meeting. It's a good thing. And I guess really, other than that, just a lot of good stuff going on. It's, the challenge is to make sure we keep, uh, keep some structure and flow to it and coherence, uh, to help people see the connections. Any questions on anything?
Looks like it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, that was very good. I don't believe we have any committee reports. So moving on to District Business, six point one. Uh, do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Deb Winkler, Principal of Black Earth Elementary and District Assessment Coordinator, effective June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, with thanks of service since two thousand sixteen? Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Gary. Do I have any discussion, any questions? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
And I will say yes as well. Thank you, Deb. Alright, do I have a motion to approve the Ecology Class Trip to Yosemite National Park and Seymour Marine Center in Santa Cruz from April nineteenth through the twenty-fourth in two thousand eighteen? What's catastrophes we hear? Thank you, Jim. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Any questions, discussion?
Just thanks for all the effort that goes into this.
Absolutely. Yes.
Another opportunity.
Yes.
That's right. Give those kids those opportunities.
That's awesome.
Relevant. Uh, Jim?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
And I will say yes as well.
Do I have a motion to approve an overnight field trip for three seniors to participate, in the UW Platteville Tri-State Honors Ban on February ninth through the tenth, two thousand eighteen? Another great possibility. Thank you, Mary Beth.
I'll second.
Thank you, Gary. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Couple more. Um, do I have a motion to, um, to take on the two thousand eighteen-nineteen open enrollment caps for regular and spec ed students? Before we make a motion, did you want to say anything else, Vivian, or these were pretty?
Yeah, they were, so, you know, I did the same process that I've done in the past, where I had every, um, special ed teacher, they, they did like, a checklist. You know, of kind of rating the needs and curriculum, instruction, communication planning, behavior, health, safety. You know, looking at every student, and then looking at, you know, kind of the ideal, um, you know, caseload size based on need, you know, and looking at kind of where we were at. You know, and still came to the conclusion that at the elementary level, you know, we're, we're pretty strapped with the needs and the numbers that we have. And just feeling like, you know, we're probably better off not accepting any open enrollment, you know, at that level. Where at the six-twelve level, we, we do have the capacity, you know, both in numbers and in need to be able to handle, you know, more students in, in that area. You know, and a few, you know, speech and language at the upper levels and, you know, even our intellectual disabilities, that's kind of really trailed off. We've had a lot of, you know, people that have graduated and moved on, and, you know, that is getting smaller, so that is a place where we could accept a few students as well. And that, you know, I had it zero in the past, but, you know, added some there. You know, and the bottom part, those who just, you know, the state allows us to, in those areas where we are contracting for our service, that we can say, you know, no to open enrollment, you know, in those areas. So it's very, it's very close to what, you know, we've done the last couple of years, you know, with, um, just a, you know, slight variation.
Did our spaces for open enrollment get filled last year?
We had maybe two students that came in through open enrollment that were special education, you know? And I'm assuming we are putting any caps on regular education right now?
No.
It's like, I know that's clearly standard, but, yeah.
Yeah, and open, I, I talked to Penny, so she did a good job of, um, we have a good job of crafting the, the motion here in terms of what we're approving, just, the, um, special ed numbers as provided in the proposal. And then, yes, the regular ed, open. Do you want to read a quick part?
Seven point three?
Yes, please.
Yes, sure. Action on the twenty eighteen-nineteen open enrollment caps for regular and special education students. The recommended action is to discuss slash possible action on the eighteen-nineteen open enrollment caps for regular and special education students. So the motion would be to approve the eighteen-nineteen open enrollment caps for regular and special education students as presented.
Yeah, so in the past, we had just said a hundred per class for regular education. Never gonna happen, but just to have something there.
Sure.
And then special education, um, as provided in the proposal would be the, the recommended motion.
So, do I have a motion as Barb and Jordan just described?
So move.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Jim. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve part-time open enrollment under Wisconsin Statutes one-one-eight-point-five-two, parentheses four, parentheses five, and parentheses six?
So this we're basically just approving as per state statute.
Okay.
Not a whole lot else to say on this one. This is one of those procedural things we just have to do annually, and now's the time to do it.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Jim. Do I have seconds?
Second.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Thanks, Gary.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Any other committee? We still have the committee on March twelfth for curriculum. Do we want to try to schedule a meeting in conference or meetings with teachers or any other?
Let me get through Thursday.
Thursday first?
And we'll go from there regarding that particular.
Sounds good.
Group, very hopeful that Thursday will go well, but I'll definitely keep posted when we can decide what we need to do or want to do from there. And if you want to add, we'll be talking about it a little bit informally, um, with other groups as well, because we have more than, more than the teachers.
Absolutely, yes. Um, that's good. We'll work on Thursday then, and also Thursday is our, um, teachers are meeting, even though that's not a board meeting, but just to put it out there, that is that night. Um, that's good. We'll work on Thursday then, and also Thursday is our, um, teacher's briefing, even though that's not a board meeting, but just to put it out there, that is that night. The design team is Thursday, yep.
Just curious then, um, it's a little note down there on Monday, March twenty-sixth.
Yep. I don't think we've had a board meeting in the past. I can't remember. Have we had it during spring break? Yeah.
Not usually.
No, yeah, so that would be March twenty-sixth, so that one is removed. Just have all of our business first. Alright, well, that is it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Mary Beth. All before seven twenty-five. Mary Beth?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
And I'll say yes too. Thank you, everybody. How's it go through? We did have another one.
I did too. Look at this.
Here's to Jordan, which is very good.
Thank you.
The twenty-sixth of March.
Oh, it's not on here anyway.
Right, right.
This caught my attention.
Oh, yeah.
At the, um, at the convention.
Thank you. I just don't want to mess it up.